Member at large, Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
Posma.
Present.
Hsuesta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin. Obawa. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Looking for motion, item number one, adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Moving right along, number two, approving the minutes from August second, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, item number three, record conditions and awards. We have nothing. Looking for item number four, a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Thomas. Item number five is a public hearing. Public hearing to review the establishment of a tax increment financing redevelopment district, uh, number sixteen, and the proposed adoption of a tax increment financing plan. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor members. Before you tonight is a public hearing for the stencil group project. Um, this will be a redevelopment on the YMCA site. Um, the TIF in the, in the packet is, um, our next step in moving the project along. This outlines the, um, steps for the TIF to take place. There's 1.6 million in present value that would be offered over the duration of the TIF. It would accumulate about 1.9 million dollars in benefit to the project. Uh, the Port Authority would recover, uh, the cost of the acquisition of the property over the TIF period. Uh, Michaela Hewitt is on the line from Baker Tilly, uh, to provide more information as well.
Okay. Counsel, anything before we turn it over to Michaela if she has anything? All right, Michaela?
I'm okay.
Excuse me, anything to add?
Oh. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Oh. Oh, sorry. Is the, uh, um, adopting the plans?
Michaela, I think your internet is...
Looking at...
Michaela, your internet's breaking up.
Um, I have something to add.
Is it Zoom wonderful?
I wonder if we can come back to Michaela later on, or, I mean, this is, if she has something to add, we'd need to hear. But she's got a connection that's failing. No.
Tell her I'll try calling her on the phone.
Mr. Danker will try calling you on his phone. We'll, we'll try calling you on, on a phone here. We're trying right now.
Who is Michaela with?
Don't, uh, Baker Tilly.
Fire away, you're loud and clear.
All right, sorry about that. Um, the only thing I would add is before you tonight is, on the action item, is adoption of the tax increment financing plan for the tax increment financing district. And this provides the city with the authority to use the tax, uh, increment revenues from the project. The total budgeted revenues and expenditures are about 3.7 million. And as Craig had mentioned, uh, roughly 1.6 goes to the developer to reimburse for a pay-as-you-go note, and the city would retain the remaining portion to reimburse for the land acquisition, uh, plus interest. And it is a redevelopment district, and the, um, as a result, the, the substandard, um, findings for the project area in the TIF district have been found. So that is the, uh, the authorization for creation of the TIF plan in the district.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anything, uh, questions or comments? Uh, if not, thank you, Michaela. Looking for a resolution for number five A, establishing a tax increment financing redevelopment, uh, district number sixteen and municipal development district number one, and adopting a tax increment financing plan therefore.
So move the resolution.
Second. Second, Obawa. Uh, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number, uh, five A is author, is a resolution authorizing an interfund, uh, loan for advance of certain costs in connection with tax increment financing district number sixteen within municipal development district number one.
This, Your Honor, is needed in order for us to loan the money to get paid back. TIF auditors, or TIF, the state auditors office, requires this document, and, um, Michaela helped to get it drafted.
Excellent. Thanks for that clarification, Tom. Uh, looking for resolution, resolution for five B.
So moved.
Resolution?
Second. Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Uh, item number six is a motion approving the tw- the 2021 Hormel Foundation grant ra- rankings. Tom? Hold on. Go ahead.
Uh, yes, before you tonight are the council rankings, um, for the Hormel Foundation grant request. These will be submitted officially tomorrow, then after council's approval. We had, uh, eleven projects being requested. A top one was I-90 Bridge Replacement, 630 grand, all the way down to the Crosswalks and Family Statue that ended up in a tie for number ten. Again, these are based on all the elected officials' rankings, and, uh, we're hopeful to get them funded.
Thank you. We're hopeful too, and we always appreciate the Hormel Foundation, what they do for the city. Uh, so with that, any comments or questions for Mr. Danker? Otherwise, looking for a motion for item number six.
So move the motion.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number seven is resolution accepting Minnesota Department of Education construction grant for the library. Julie?
Yes, Mayor and councilmembers, thank you. Um, as we wa- talked about last week, or two weeks ago at the work session, um, we went over a little bit of the construction grant and what was needed. And this is part of the grant agreement, is we need a resolution just saying that the city of Austin does hold title to the library and accepts the $319,000, um, in grant monies so that we can move forward with the grant.
Okay. Counsel, anything for Julie? Questions or comments? Uh, if not, looking for a resolution for item number seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number eight is a resolution accepting the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds established under the American Rescue Plan Act. Tom?
Uh, Your Honor, you may recall, a month or two ago, you passed a resolution approving application for the recovery, uh, the American Recovery Funds. Now we're in need of one to accept an actual dollar amount, um, per the regulation. So this is just a resolution similar to the last one you did, but this now officially accepts the grant from the federal government.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, anything?
What, what is the dollar amount?
Million 335,000, zero, four, zero, twice. Once this year, once next year, uh, at the one-year anniversary date.
Great. Thank you.
Two, in total, 2,670,080 and 90 cents. But who's counting?
It's time to be exact.
We'll all get a can of pop for the 90 cents. Thank you. Uh, with that, need a resolution for number eight?
So move the resolution.
Aye, second.
Okay, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number nine is resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. Those donations are a hundred-dollar gift from Maynard Acumen for flowers in memory of Kathy Schaefer. Thank you, Maynard, and a, uh, a hundred-dollar gift, uh, uh, from Douglas Valpay, uh, to the K-9 Fund. Thank you, Douglas. With that, looking for a mo- a resolution to accept those donations?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 10 is motion approving Verin Banvut to the Human Rights Commission, term expiring December 31st, 2022. Your motion to accept that?
Second.
Okay. Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
We welcome aboard Verin. We, I left her a voice message the other day. I know she's excited to serve, so that's great.
That's awesome.
Item number 11 is a motion, uh, reviewing the annexation, uh, ordinance for city-owned property in Lansing Red Rock Townships. Holly?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Uh, this first annexation, there are two annexations, uh, I divided them out based on the requirements of the state statute. Um, both, uh, can be, uh, annexed by ordinance without notice. Um, this first, uh, annexation, um, allows the annexation of city-owned properties, uh, that are tax-exempt. Um, in this instance, all the parcels are located within and adjacent to city boundaries. The parcels are unimproved. The most southerly parcel that, uh, uh, borders the golf course, um, is a road, but otherwise, the majority of the properties are part of the Hormel Nature Center. Um, no payments will be made to the townships based on the tax-exempt status of the properties. Um, they will be zoned R-O, the property south of the Wind Drift, and then A-1, um, in keeping with the uses at the Hormel Nature Center. Um, the total acreage is approximately 89 acres. Um, and I included a list of reasons for annexation, but, um, just from, uh, you know, jurisdictional, regulatory, and, uh, planning perspective, I would recommend annexing our city parcels into the boundary, city boundaries.
All right. Thank you, Holly. Seems to make good sense. Counsel, anything for Holly? If not, looking for a motion for 11A for the preparation of the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Item number 11B is, uh, looking for, uh, for the adoption of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Uh, quick clarification from Attorney Craig Byram. Uh, Mr. Baskin's gone today, but on the first reading, a six-zero vote is appropriate.
Okay.
Uh, he just texted me, said it was. So, uh, ordinance passes six zero, Your Honor.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, item number 12 is reviewing annexation ordinance for Austin Township property. Holly?
Yeah, this one's a little different. Um, it's a per- private property owned by Don Richardson. He actually petitioned for annexation. Um, he received a letter from our county regarding a phalanx, phalanx septic system, which is not uncommon, um, when we get private residences asking to annex. Um, he is, uh, as wanting to, or needs to connect to city sewer, sanitary sewer, um, and the city of Austin has sanitary sewer available, um, at his location, which is on Fourth Drive Southwest. He has approximately one and a half acres, and, uh, again, just, uh, requesting, uh, annexation in order to connect to sanitary sewer.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. Counsel, anything for Holly? If not, looking for a, uh, motion for the preparation of the ordinance to 12A?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. Looking for someone to move for 12B for the adoption of the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Ordinance passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, looks like item number 13 has been struck from the agenda. Moving on to item number 14 is a resolution accepting an airfield lighting grant, uh, for the Austin Municipal Airport. Mr. Lang?
There's actually two grants as part of this item. One is a federal grant that will cover 100% of the airfield lighting costs in the amount of 398,080 dollars, and that is for upgrades to the runway and taxiway lighting to make, uh, LED improvements, and also all the associated, uh, infrastructure that would go along with that. Uh, could be, could be lighting, could be transformers and other things. So that is a 100% federal grant, and then the second portion of it would be a state grant that is actually zero dollars, but the state is act- acting as the pass-through authority, which the city does sometimes as well. In this case, uh, we'll also need to approve a state grant for zero dollars. So we would recommend the request approval of both of these grants tonight.
Okay. Counsel, anything for Mr. Lang? Looking for resolution number 14.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom. The airport's gonna be sipping the energy with those LED lights. Uh, item number 15 is resolution accepting airport grant for the American Rescue Plan for the Austin Municipal Airport. Stephen?
Yes, we've passed a couple of these through different, uh, rescue plans that have been adopted by federal government. In this case, they are looking at an allocation for the Austin Municipal Airport of up to $32,000 that would go toward, um, v- very similar to the other grants that we have received. They would go toward our normal maintenance and operations to, uh, keep things open during this, uh, time. So we would recommend, uh, approving the $32,000 of grant funding for the airport.
Thank you, Stephen. Anything further, counsel? Uh, entertain a motion number 15, uh, a resolution accepting the airport grant, American Rescue Plan.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
All right, let's talk about some 100-year-old river, uh, siphons. Item number 16 is a resolution approving the engineering design service for the Cedar River Siphons. Stephen?
Earlier this year, council approved a contract with WHKS to review the existing siphons. As the mayor mentions, they're 100 years old. And in reviewing them, looking at them, it was determined that they should be replaced, and they developed some options for replacing those existing siphons, and came up with a recommendation to replace them with a two-barrel approach, which would be a, an eight-inch and a 12-inch pipe that would carry the flow. Um, that cost estimate for that option is 538,000 dollars. We do have this budgeted and planned with, uh, funds to come from our, uh, collection fees. And the next step would be to design plans and specifications for the project. WHKS has given us a proposal of 41,200 dollars to complete the, the plan development and also the bidding portion of the project. So we would recommend awarding a contract to WHKS to complete this work.
Thank you, Stephen. Counsel, anything further? Uh, I'll entertain a resolution for number 16.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 17 is resolution approving engineering design services for the 21st Avenue Northeast Project. Stephen?
At a recent work session, we discussed the, some design options for 21st Avenue Northeast, which is located just on the south side of Todd Park. And now the next step, because this is a federal project, we need to develop a, what is called a project memorandum, which reviews, which requests, um, information or review from many different state agencies and, and gain their approval for the project before moving forward with plans and specifications to, to spend this, these federal dollars on, on a local project. So it's a, it's quite a process to, to go through the, to gather these approvals, and then also, um, move forward with the state design, or the, uh, design meeting state standards. We have put forth, um, a schedule to complete this work with the project memorandum being completed by December 1st of this year. Plans to be completed, uh, near or around March 1st, and a bid date, again, near or around April 10th, so that we are set up for construction of the project, uh, next summer, in the summer of 2022. In order to complete this work on this timeline, we looked at a couple different consulting firms and request proposals from them to complete this work. And the, we received three proposals from WHKS, Bolton &amp; Mank, and SEH. And when, when breaking them down to try to compare apples to apples, they're all very similar. Uh, Bolton &amp; Mank included, uh, multiple items that actually would come later from the other consulting firms. And so it, it looks like their number is a little bit higher initially, but when looking at, um, other services that would come later, it's, it's right in the ballpark. We've, we've worked with Bolton &amp; Mank before. They have a strong civil engineering, transportation group, and, uh, they've done other projects like this for us in the past. So therefore, we would recommend, uh, extending a contract to Bolton &amp; Mank in the amount of 94,830 dollars to complete this work for us.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have anything for Mr. Lang? Then I'll look for a resolution for item number 17?
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Item number 18 is resolution accepting a grant from International Paper for, for the Austin Fire Department. Chief McCoy?
Uh, Mayor, council, I'm very excited to receive, uh, these funds from International Paper. Uh, we're gonna purchase additional, uh, protective equipment for the troops. Uh, recommend approval of the 5,500 dollars from International Paper.
Right. I think we'll be happy to accept it. Counsel?
So move the resolution.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Those last many, uh, agenda items, it's not lost on me, the great amount of work that's being going, is going on in every department that we, I think we covered but for Kevin being, uh, a strike, uh, on the, on the agenda. This is a lot of, a lot of work being done. Uh, and also a lot of federal money and grant money coming in, so I certainly, and I know the council appreciates it as well, uh, the efforts on every department, so thank you very much for that. And moving on to resolution number 19, declaring the property at 709 Oakland Avenue West a hazardous structure. Counsel?
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. A series of motions for item number 20, A, B, and C are granting the Planning and Zoning Department the power to contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. 20A is 713 Fourth Ave, Northeast, the Miller Property.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 20B is located at, uh, 1004 Fifth Street Northwest, the Markort Property.
So moved. Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. 20C is located at 1206 12th Street Northwest, the Sheehan Property.
So moved.
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
Posma.
Aye.
Hsuesta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Obawa.
Aye.
Councilmember at large, Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes six zero, Your Honor.
Okay, I don't see anybody in council chambers, but anybody, any citizens on the Zoom call that would like to address the council? Okay. Hearing none. Uh, we don't have an honorary council member at this point, uh, and we're looking, still looking for some applications, if you know of anyone, uh, reports and recommendations. Craig?
Uh, only a couple items I have. I did receive contact from Senator Klobuchar's office on our 28.5 million dollar request for our wastewater treatment plant. This is very similar to the state's process where they ask if you'll accept any reduction in request, and then also if there's a phasing option that's available. I shared with them that we're certainly willing to, uh, take a haircut like anyone else, if that's helpful, and, uh, explain to them the difficulty of phasing our project, that we've already tried to do that a bit with the state, uh, and that would make it challenging. Um, the House on the wastewater plant as well. The Minnesota House of Representatives announced that they'll be doing tours in southeast Minnesota on the 9th and 10th of November. Um, I reached out to Representative Mueller to ask that, uh, we be, uh, added to the tour list, so we'll wait to see if the Bondi Committee would like to take another visit to the wastewater plant here in Austin. Otherwise, that's all I have.
Thank you, Craig. Is there any department heads?
I don't have any.
No? All right. Counsel, Paul?
Good afternoon, Your Honor.
Thank you. Obawa?
Uh, I have nothing, Your Honor. I just, sorry for coming late, so I was, I was running.
Well, but...
We, I, um, I just get back from Washington DC, so there's a big event. They invite me as a guest speaker up there. So that's one of the, one of the biggest East Africa events, so I was happy to share the work of Austin and also what we're doing here as a welcoming community. It's good to get exposed to other states, so, yeah.
That is quite an honor. Congratulations on it. Thanks for representing us.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Uh, nothing, Your Honor.
Rebecca?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Joyce?
Sure.
Let's hear it.
Why not? Um, Mayor, you touched on this a little bit. Um, tonight, as we were going through the agenda, um, we talked about almost 700,000 dollars in grants between library, fire department, airport, and I don't think anybody who's never done a grant has any idea how much work goes into these. I mean, one, you have to find the grant, and two, applying for them is about the biggest headache, um, anybody can do. So, um, I, just really impressed with the staff and all the work they do to find these for us and to get them for us and secure them, so. And then the only other thing I have is, I'm wondering if either Craig or Tom could quickly touch base and circle back to the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds, and explain maybe to somebody in the public what, what those are and what they're used for, 'cause I get asked quite a bit about funding for, uh, coronavirus-type things. So if somebody could circle back to that, just explain what it is.
Like parameters and how it's used, those kind of things?
Yeah, what it's used for, yep.
Tom?
So last year, the city of Austin received CARES Act money to the tune of, I think it was about four, well, a large dollar amount,